Everybody good? James, are we good? We're good. Thank you. Let's call the meeting to order. This is a committee of the whole May the 18th, 2021. Roll call, please.
Tim.
Here.
Amber.
Here.
Jean.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Arthur.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Thank you. Next, our pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, counsel. Next, I'll make a look for approval of the agenda. Motion to approve. First, if I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Roll call.
Amber.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Next is the approval of the April 20th COW minutes.
Pardon? That's me.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second. Roll call.
Don.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Next is our monthly financials.
Okay, this is for April 2021. City general income was $307,949.66. Expenses were $601,761.10, which leaves a negative operating income of $298.270.44 with a year-to-date of 2,434.03. And the reason for that was the purchase of the Bandini property. Okay. Water and sewer income was $299,525.47. Expenses were $273,977.47 with an operating income of a positive $25,005.48. In the streets, income was $46,009.19. Expenses was $16,771.80 with a positive operating income of $30,147.37.
Thank you, Rhonda. Any questions? Next, we'll go to our comments from citizens. If you are here and you have a comment, please state your name, address, and keep your comments to three minutes. Seeing none. James, do we have anybody online? You can signify by raising your hand on our Zoom meeting? Next, we'll go to our departmental reports, and we'll start with the police department.
For the month of April 2021, we responded to 783 calls for service, filed 22 accident reports, served 92 warrants, leaving us outstanding 649. Hopefully, some will notice that the warrant amount has dropped down roughly $180,000, down to $740,234.50. Training hours, year-to-date, we've logged 236 hours of training. Total citations issued are 324 for speed, 161 for other traffic violations, 50 for criminal, and 83 for city ordinance and proper driving. 326 warnings total, 112 for speed, 209 for other traffic violations, and five for the city ordinance proper driving.
All right. So I've seen the million-dollar filing cabinet, which I cannot call that anymore, apparently. But how did $180,000 fall away?
Court is starting to pick up again. So we're hoping next month that we'll actually be back to normal, actually utilizing the courtroom and getting that process a little bit smoother. So.
So it doesn't mean that we got $180,000 into the conference?
No, unfortunately not.
That would have made me happier, but oh, well.
Right.
Take what I can get. Thank you.
Another question on that, chief. Do we still have the, I don't want to call it work release, but the ability for some of those people to be able to pay for some of their fines by providing services to the city?
They're welcome to anytime. That's been there and went in. I believe the mayor has some more on that.
Yeah, we've been working with the city attorney a little bit. You know, we've been trying to figure out some ways to allow people to work off, you know, some of these fines. We've been speaking with Justin a little bit about it because there's obviously some legal stuff and hoops that we got to jump through. It's not as simple as just saying, hey, come up here and go to work. We do still allow people to come up. They have to give Cory a call and like they're on probation or whatever, and they have to put in so many hours. So what we're attempting to do is a system to where they can meet up here on a Saturday. And we're also kind of trying to work this in conjunction with waste management, that waste management's employees can supervise them because we felt like that one of the things that was desperately needed here in the city of Tonny Town, as well as on our main highway that runs out here, is picking up trash. So we've been talking with waste management about them furnishing some employees to be up here. And obviously, there's some liability deals that we have to get worked out with them and us to be able to do that. So it's just been a longer process than what we thought it would take to get it done. But yes, we're attempting to do that.
The main struggle for us is just manpower. Most people are able to do it on the weekends, but we don't have the manpower to come out and watch somebody while they're doing their community service and make sure what we ask them to do is getting done. If they're able to do it during the week, we have plenty of people here to help with that. It's just not a lot are available Monday through Friday.
Would that require an officer to do that, or could we do that with other city personnel?
We can do it with other city personnel.
And that's one of the things we're trying to do with waste management is they feel like that they know that there is some trash debris that's blowing out. So that's one of the pitches that I use is saying, hey, if you guys will furnish us a couple of people to watch over these people, and these are not hardened criminals that we're getting out of prison, these are just people that are trying to pay off a fine. But if you will help us take them around in a van to pick up some of the side streets, and even in here in the park, it would be a two-way street, you know, helps them to not have to hire people to pick up trash that they're supposed to be doing anyway. And it also helps these people pay down a fine a little bit and also beautifies our city. So we kind of think it will be a win-win if we can ever get all the bugs worked out of it. So we hope to be able to tell you more about it probably next month is when we like to try to implement it.
But when we, when we worked on Clint's here several years ago, it was hard at the time.
Right.
We had inmates.
Right.
That volunteered. I understand, but.
Right.
If we can't do the other, do you think, I mean, I would volunteer data.
The problem.
Ride shotgun, so to speak.
We've actually called the Washington County about getting inmates to come do stuff in the park. But unfortunately, with the whole COVID deal going on still.
Okay.
They were a little bit reluctant to do that right now. So hopefully, in the next month or two, when everybody is vaccinated and everybody hopefully calms down about some of this stuff, we can get back to some of that. And yes, if you'd like to volunteer to come up here on a Saturday, we'll start.
Or a weekday if they, you know.
Well, what we were thinking was is if most of these people, and the thought process is we charge them 25 bucks. So they actually have to pay to come up here to do this. And hopefully, with the courts, if they have, say, $150 fine, then their obligation would be to work six or eight hours, wherever the number is. Come up here on a Saturday, pay us 25 bucks for our person's time, maybe that is designated to stay with them. And then we would write off that $125 or $150 fine. Am I correct in making that statement? So we're trying to make it a win for them, a win for us, and a win for the city is what we're trying to do in this game.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Thank you, chief.
Chief? Sorry. Hey, I met several of your guys last week, and they were amazingly gracious and fantastic. And they have great things to say about you. But you're running a great group of guys over there, and they have a great deal of respect for you. And I want to thank you. Thanks for what you're doing.
Chief, let's, let me get you back one more second. Can you give us an update on the fishing day that?
It was awesome. I won.
I haven't heard anything on that.
I got, I got a fish this big.
We had a good turnout. I believe we were close to around 30 kids that participated. I believe the biggest fish was close to five pounds.
Wow.
Caught catfish. So good turnout. We hope to grow it and improve it more in years to come.
Good. Thank you.
It was a great event.
We appreciate you putting that on and doing it for the city. Next is our fire department.
For April, we responded to 33 calls in the city, 13 in the rural area. I think I may have mentioned this, but we did last month receive notification. We didn't get our first quarter firehouse sub grant that we applied for. So we reapplied for the next quarter, which will be awarded in July. So hopefully, keep our fingers crossed on that. Training, we had continuing education hours for EMT license. We also completed 16 hours of auto extrication training. That was both eight hours classroom and eight hours hands-on. We also had a part of our public education program. We provided fire extinguisher training to waste management. We went out there at five o'clock in the morning, did one group at 5:00 a.m., group of drivers, had another group come in at 6:00 and went really well. They really appreciated the training. And that's about all I have. Any questions I could answer?
So eight hours of hands-on, you were just like cutting up cars up?
And it wasn't quite eight hours, but the class requires, you know, certain skills to be done during that time. We actually completed them in less than that, but.
Our department's just taking.
Yeah. You got it.
Any other questions? Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Next is our public works department.
City of Tonny Town Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Adjustments will hold the public hearing Tuesday, May 25th at 6:00 p.m. Following items will be discussed. There will be a conditional use permit application for the villas at Tonny Town, an active lifestyle living community. This development is proposed on the east side of Clint's Road at the intersection of Morsoni and Clint's. Large-scale development for Gerber Collision Center. This development is back behind McDonald's in the Venezia Piazza addition. A large-scale development for Eco Vista and the property located at 2210 Waste Management Drive. The request is for the landfill expansion and improvements. Also, a proposed subdivision, Montagani Estates, will be constructed on South Montagani Road, approximately 500 feet south of 412. They'll also discuss updates to the master street plan and updates to the Tonny Town drainage criteria management. Crossing on Steel Road, both of those last two being on the Little Wildcat Creek. In the last couple of years, RDOT has noted deficiencies and recommended improvements on the Reed Valley Bridge. I've put off the repairs for a couple of years due to the fact that the street department is not flush with funds, and there is not imminent threat of failure. However, I do recommend at this time that we move forward with the project because the repairs will exceed the $20,000 threshold. I've enlisted Carl Gales with KAS Gales Engineering to put together an engineered set of plans in preliminary discussions with Mr. Gales. He estimates the cost of the project to be in the $100,000 range. He also suggested that we contact RDOT to see if they will allow us to use some of the $300,000 that we were awarded in state aid street funds. I feel this is a good solution to finance this project and recommend we proceed in that direction. And the water and sewer department, we're still trying to acquire the final few easements for the Highway 412 water project. And if it seems like it's going on forever, it is. If you remember, in February, we discussed rerouting the water line around the north side of the Catholic Church property in order to not disturb the area where they intend to construct their memorial gardens. A representative from the church met with us last Friday and informed us that the diocese in Little Rock is willing to allow the city to install the water line on their property, but they are asking for compensation. They calculated that to be in the neighborhood of about $100,000. Needless to say, we're going back to the drawing board on that. That's all I got.
I'm wondering if we can charge more for police presence during the great festival.
That's exactly what I was thinking, Mr. Burr. Question for you, James. The Reed Valley and Steel Bridges. Can, can you give us an idea of the deficiencies that we're having on those so they're not beating?
The biggest issue on the Reed Valley Bridge is there's not a solid wall on both sides. So the, the material on the abutments or where the bridge meets the, the road is slowly filtering down and into the creek. Every time we get a big flood, it's washing material out from under that. They, they tried to fix it a little bit on the west side by putting shot rock in there. But after several floods, it's actually washing up around the shot rock and still eating out the, the base of the, the road, really. So it's going to involve digging that out. I mean, the road is going to have to be closed for a, I would say it will take two to three weeks to dig down on both sides of the bridge, pour a concrete wall, and then refill that back up and top it off. And that will prevent the water or the dirt from filtering out when the water level gets up.
So we wouldn't have to replace that bridge?
No, no, we don't have to.
Rebuilding it, basically.
Right.
Forcing it. What about the one on Steel?
Yeah, there's not any deficiencies on that. Basically, it's just a culvert crossing.
I saw where they had poured concrete on the.
Yeah.
South side.
There was a washout on the west side of that.
Yeah. And that bridge was built, what, 1942? What's actually on the bridge?
I'm not sure of the date on that one. I thought the Reed Valley Bridge was older too. But I noticed the other day when I was down there, there was a plaque on it, and it was done in '74 or '76. So it was, it was replaced at some time.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes. On this Montagani Estates, where, where's that at, James?
That's the one that's back behind the Journey Church. When you turn on to Montagani off of 412.
Okay.
Yeah. Be on the west side of Montagani.
Like 13 lots. All right. I was thinking of the sub mill.
And that $100,000 is just for the Reed Valley Bridge?
Yes.
That's the only one that has the deficiency?
Correct.
And that deal, that bridge in Memphis, that wasn't our side, that was their side, right?
Sure.
Okay, let's go with that.
Mayor, can you confirm?
Why? My stupid question. I go to church over there, but why are they asking for $100,000 compensation?
What, what really hurt us on that deal is the city of Fayetteville. You know, they're trying to get a transmission line through Tonny Town for eventually Beaver Water District is going to put in a pump station up at Elm Springs. So this is like probably 20 years in the future. But Fayetteville is buying easement. Well, they just went through the church property and paid them $75,000 an acre for the easement.
Yeah.
But I think it's a different deal than what we're, we're trying to do. I mean, they're, the water line that they're putting through the city Fayetteville cuts their property in half. So it kind of, I think, upsets the property just a little bit is why they paid that amount versus what we're trying to do is, is trying to work with them to go around the monument. So I tend to agree with Mr. Burr that they probably need to be politely reminded that we do quite a bit for their church. So next time you go to church, Art, I'd appreciate you saying something.
We could build the easement and let Fayetteville pay for it.
Right, right. Their easement was a little, a little larger, but it is on the far east side of the church property. And I don't think it's anything that the church is trying to do. You know, everything goes through Little Rock.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Any other questions for Public Works? Thank you. And planning, do we have anything else for planning?
Oh. Go ahead. How about you find out anything about the signs yet?
I'm still waiting on our attorney to put together a little deed for Talbot's property down here. And I'm still waiting from, on the state.
Okay.
Hurry up and wait.
Yep.
Thank you. And next is our Tonny Town Museum Board, and I think Larry is going to.
Sure, I'm going to take over for Beverly Cordiana. She couldn't be here tonight for whatever reason. Short and sweet here. The board directors met via Zoom the last time, but as my understanding, they're going to start meeting in person, which is a good thing. The board discussed the annual May event put on by the Tonny Town Historical Museum and finalized plans for an in-person event at the park Sunday, May the 23rd from 1:00 to 3:00. There's flyers that we can look at here, and it's going to have music and food, some activities, so it'd be a good thing. And then the board discussed plans to build a pole barn-like structure south of museum to house larger artifacts like farming equipment that are in the museum's collection. They're collecting information on price as we speak. If you need to get into the museum for any reason, it's still closed. You need to contact Pam. And their next meeting is scheduled for Monday, June the 7th at 6:00 p.m. in person. So that's all unless, and if you're not a member of the museum board, I mean, the historical museum, please consider it's $20 a year, I believe. And, and I am guilty as charged of not being there, but I fully intend to be. Think about joining the museum board. And I think that's it.
Larry, do you know who will be paying for that pole barn?
Yes.
Would you like to share?
I'm sure the city will be paying for that.
All right. If they were taking.
They have a building fund, but I don't know that, I really don't know. I do not.
And the pole barn is going where?
South of the museum right here. Mr. Piazza has, I don't know if he still does, but at one time he had several pieces of equipment in his possession on his property down there. And it needs to probably be part of the city.
Find a home. Cool. Well, thank you. Good job standing in.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Larry. And seeing we have no old business, we'll go directly in our new business. And first is our discussion of the purchase of a backhoe for the Public Works Department under Mayor Coben.
Counsel brought this for you again. There was a discussion at last Cal meeting and last council meeting. So we brought the discussion up for you once again for a purchase of the backhoe. Not to make any new arguments for you, but during the rain showers, we had, we really needed two backhoes at that time because we had emergencies in both ends of the town. Not to make an argument for your water, sewer, and street departments, but they could have used it. Also, estimates on the used backhoe is selling it outright is going to be somewhere between 10,000 and 15,000, we think. And also, trade-in value on it is going to be roughly the same. We haven't, unless James has talked to him as of recent about the trade-in value on it. We feel that there's no reason not to go forward with purchase of a new backhoe and then decide what to do with it. But it's your decision to make and to discuss.
Where does that 10 or 15 grand come from, from the, the trade-in on it?
I did actually receive a quote today on the trade-in value, and it's 16,000.
Well, yeah.
So we're, so we're close.
And I would request at that trade-in value that I'd be allowed to keep it.
Right.
I think it's worth more to us than, than that.
Well, I think I may have found a way to pay for it.
Yeah.
I know you've already got the money.
Warrants?
I'm sorry?
Warrants.
It wasn't me this time. Boomch. It wasn't me. You know, we've got a million-dollar loan at, at Grand Savings Bank. And I was talking to Pat. I know that we've got roughly $6.2 million in, in cash and various things. And I know it's predominantly an emergency fund. I get, I get that, and I'm all about that. But if we were to pay that off, there's roughly a $750,000 balance. We've got 202,000 in cash at that bank. So it's roughly a $550,000 payoff. And these numbers aren't perfect, but roughly at 4.35% interest on $750,000, that's about almost $98,000 in a straight line over the next three years. And maybe we should consider paying off that loan. I know that the money doesn't come to us right now, but it does free up some money. And we don't have to talk about it tonight, but it's something that I find a little intriguing if you wanted to keep that other backhoe.
And that, that fund that you're talking about, that is water and sewer?
Well, it's, it was the loan for the water tower.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was overage for the water tower.
Right.
Right.
Takeout. So, I mean, does anybody have any thoughts about that? Or is it something we talk about at another time? Mayor, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I agree with you that the, the principal and interest amount that if you paid off the loan, that you would save the interest amount over the period of three years, which would, in essence, pay off this backhoe. I don't disagree with paying for, paying the loan off since we do, I think, have what, $4 point some million saved. But you're fixing to spend about a million dollars on Fletcher Road coming up this year. Also, some of the things that we've set up internal. Um, also, uh, some of the things that we've set up internal, uh, within your budget that a lot of you probably don't know about is I've kind of made Pat set up accounts that in case the city ever encounters an emergency, we can pay employees for six months.
Yeah, and, and I, and I worked that out in my number here.
Right. Um, so, yeah.
Roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, about a hundred and seventy for police, one oh seven for parks, and the fifty-two for fire.
So, I mean, you pay this off for four hundred and fifty thousand and you pay off the million dollars. Yeah, I, I, I can see that it would save you a ton of money in interest right now to do that. Um, I just think that we need to analyze it just a little bit to make sure that we don't put ourselves in case we have an emergency come up.
I, I, I agree, but you're willing to look into that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Absolutely, absolutely. And, but I do agree with Mr. Clark that, you know, it is what it is on the backhoe. Um, it's an additional piece of equipment that I think the city sometimes can utilize. I mean, just like the ice storm that we had, one of the things that we use the backhoe for is to push snow with. Um, obviously, if we had to, then we could move more snow and ice. I mean, I can make several arguments for it. I think holding on to the piece of equipment right now, just as a backup, doesn't necessarily hurt us in a way. Um, I wish that backhoes weren't ninety-three thousand dollars, but it is what it is right now with them. So I, I totally agree with you, Mr. Burris, as far as paying off notes. I like that because it pays off interest.
Well, I, I certainly don't have a problem hanging on to a sixteen thousand dollar piece of equipment, right? I mean, everything we own is going to cost some money and upkeep and various things, but I certainly don't have a problem with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I agree.
Can we pass that to a vote?
Uh, we would ask that you push it forward to the council meeting for you to vote.
Okay, well, yeah, I'll make a motion that we do.
Thank you, sir.
Roll call.
Arthur?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that information.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you.
And even if we should purchase this backhoe now, um, there's no reason we couldn't pursue.
Selling the other one later.
Selling the other one or, uh, changing these finances around where we're paying off that loan, correct?
Oh, I agree, because.
So we can discuss this again.
Yeah.
Down the road.
One of the things, one of the things that Pat does for you guys too, and I don't always tell you guys about it, but we're, he's the king of rotating money with CDs. And we have moved CD after CD after CD around and, and actually, uh, up until this last year, he accumulated probably about seventy-five thousand dollars in gained interest off CDs that he's moved. Unfortunately, interest rates on CDs really are down right now. So he's not so proud of himself today. No, no.
Okay, thank you, council. Next is discussion of our bond issue with Mr. Dalman.
Well, where I'm at with this, I thought we kind of got to a better spot at the end of the last meeting. I would be for, uh, paying off the existing bond that we have, the water and sewer uh, bonds of three point six and three point seven five. The, uh, public facility building, I'd like to get a better number on just doing a fire station only. And then trying to put the remainder of the money into roads. Um, we had six point seven five for the both sides. Uh, on the one deal, we were saying, they were saying three point five for fire. I don't know if we can build a fire station for that. I'd like to maybe have that architect, if he, if he went back over this on just fire station, if he could give us a, a more solid number appeal or other than that, I'm, I would be for this under those circumstances myself. Go ahead, Mr.
Yeah, I heard the comment, um, about the roads, uh, the last time, and I don't disagree with, uh, putting money to roads. The only thing, and, and Mr. McCartney is bringing it up in the next discussion. The only thing that concerns me a little bit about adding, uh, roads to your bond packages. It, it kind of feels like to me, and Tim helped me out here. Um, you get a lot of people that are, are told that they need to finance their cars and, and their refrigerators and everything in with their house on a thirty-year deal. And, and it never made sense to me why somebody would do that because their car is going to wear out in five years or less. And they go buy a new car and they got that payment again. And that's my only fear with adding roads to a bond deals because you have a thirty-year payoff on a, on a road that's going to wear out prior to. Um, and I was tickled that Mr. McCartney called me and was wanting to talk more about impact fees. Because I, I think that if you'll allow him to discuss in this next session, about the use of impact fees is more of a, a game of money coming to the city continually that you guys can put in accounts, which, uh, when I discussed it with Mr. McCartney, is if you guys would, would move forward with some impact fees, uh, that you could put towards your police, your fire, your water, your sewer and your roads. And I, I've even discussed it with Mr. Agman just a little bit, that you can't necessarily do repair and maintenance with impact fees. But you can build new roads with impact fees. So that's the only thing I caution you guys a little bit about, um, is adding roads or a project to this bond issue that you're going to drag out for thirty years to pay off. I think the interest and stuff that you're looking at on that outweighs doing that to me.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree with you. And one of the concerns that I have is something that came up with Kevin Fought in a conversation we had last week. And I wanted to bring this up. I wanted to talk to Kevin again. But there, there are certain things that you cannot borrow money for.
Right.
Right? Because of replacement. So you can't get a ten-year loan on your car, Art, sorry, on the new truck you just bought. Because th- they look at it and say, well, cars aren't, you know, as viable ten years later, right? You can't, uh, you can't get a hundred-year mortgage on your house, right? That'd be super. But there might be an issue, as we talked to Mr. Fought more about this, about some of those things, because the roads are going to need constant.
Right.
Right? Work on them. So it's one of those things that we have to think about. I very much appreciate your willingness to find money for roads, and I do want to find money for roads. Uh, and we may have to find another way to do it within this bond deal. And we may have to do it another way entirely. And Don, I certainly do not mean to shoot down anything you're saying. Uh, but it is a concern that I have as well, uh, on that and, and which way to go. Um, so it's probably something that we need to talk more about. Um, and then one and a half million dollars is not a whole lot. And then just the kind of the, the crazy, crazy, you guys can all look, you know, at the crazy guy here. Um, I so hate debt, and I know you guys know that and we've talked about it. But I've been doing some math after I talked to Kevin last week, and I talked to him last Wednesday, the day before or the day of our meeting. We're spending roughly eight million dollars in interest payments on this thirty-year loan bond, the way that it's set up. And, and it's roughly twenty-two thousand dollars a month. I mean, it, it a little bit expires every year, right? But it's, it's roughly twenty-two thousand dollars a month. And I wonder, and I, and I know that it's really difficult, so instead of just looking at me like I'm completely insane, try to walk through like, is there a way we can do any of this? I wonder if there's any way that we can buy some of those things with cash, maybe with impact fees or something else, and find ways with, I mean, I know we've got a big emergency fund and I don't want a small emergency fund. But is there a way that we can start purchasing some things with cash?
Well, and I think you make a valid argument, um, that what I would prefer, or I think after re-looking at this a little bit, is, is take your money, the one point five, put it back into your water and sewer projects because they're more of a permanent nature. Um, the cash that I've been telling you guys about from the federal government is going to be roughly eight hundred and twenty-seven or eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, because you had made this statement, Mr. Burris, since we're on tape, um, about finding different locations to build a future police department, to build a future this, build a future that. I mean, it's kind of my opinion, and I think we'll have to check, but I'm pretty sure that we could take that eight hundred and some thousand dollars and purchase another piece of land for future building growth or whatever, but.
We can use that for anything?
No, you can't. But you can use it for infrastructure improvements, and I think the land would qualify as an improvement for future growth. So I think it's something that we could look at to talk about further. But I think that you take the one point five, because we originally took it away from James, because I was going to take the money and put back to water and sewer. But put the money back into your water and sewer, because that's going to immediately impact the city with future growth potential. So if we can add more sewer lines elsewhere, we can add more updates to the water lines, then it will, I think, spur us economically many more years to come.
And then how do we pay for roads?
I think with the roads, um, I think there's a big difference between maintenance and building new infrastructure for roads. Obviously, we, we've needed for a long time to, um, look at our master street plan, which we're currently doing within our, our own city departments. But I think that the impact fees that Mr. McCartney is going to discuss with you could be used to build new infrastructure within the city of Tonnit Town. And I think it's immediate money because our growth rate, I mean, had we done this three years ago? Uh, and I'll just throw a wild number out here. I think the city, and Amber, you're going to have to help me out because you probably know more about this than I do. But city of Bentonville, I think, is four thousand dollars per house is what their impact fee, I think. I don't know that for sure, but I'm guessing. And I'm not suggesting that that's our magic number because you have to do studies to determine those numbers. But, um, had we had started this five years ago at four thousand dollars per house like Bentonville? Four thousand dollars per apartment? Four thousand dollars per business? I mean, I don't know all the numbers, but that would generate capital pretty quick.
A lot of capital.
Yeah, and, and in a hurry. And with as much subdivision development that we're looking at coming into Tonnit Town right now. I, I mean, I'm just looking at Hickory Meadows. How many houses is that?
Hundreds.
Like three hundred roughly? So there's three hundred houses. You've got Kevin Nally and them looking at doing another subdivision. We just, James and I just spoke with another developer that's wanting to do seven hundred homes in Tonnit Town. So these are, these are funds that, that keep coming to the city as people develop and want to build here more.
Well, just the two things you just said, that's four million dollars.
Right. So, and that's, I think that's money that we could see in three years, which would build a lot of roads immediately. Now, that doesn't fix the problem that we have for maintenance. So what I did, or I had, I say, I, I asked you guys to do was change our tax structure on one of our one cent sales tax where we put an additional roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year into the account of roads. Now, I think as the city grows, as we have more sales tax, that number could possibly increase to over a hundred thousand dollars that we utilize for a maintenance plan of our streets. I mean, a hundred thousand dollars doesn't go very far, but what I can tell you is that this past year, and James can testify, the, the company that we hired out of Fort Smith, they did quite a bit of maintenance for what, forty-five thousand dollars last year? I think that's what we spent.
Yeah, I don't think we even spent that much.
Right. He, uh, he did some overlay stuff out on Liberty. Um, he did a, some patchwork on Barrington. He filled, uh, well, his agreement with this is twenty-eight dollars a pothole. But I don't want to call him just to do one pothole. I want to make sure we have several. Um, fortunately for us, Scott and the guys have been doing a lot of the pothole maintenance. Uh, now what is lacking on our streets right now as far as maintenance is road edges. He did tell me that if, 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 if we want, that he would come back and give us a quote for doing street edges. But I think that we, that you guys utilized that hundred thousand dollars, and I think it could increase. And I think that you guys could shift and we could put maybe some more of that tax dollar into that account for your maintenance. And I, I think that's one of the things that I asked, uh, you guys to do that was on that committee, was come back with a, a, a top ten list of areas that you guys, this is number one that we want to see fixed, number two that we want to see fixed. So that you give us an idea of what your guys' priority levels are. And then sit down with this hundred thousand that we know is going to be created this next year to have somewhat of a maintenance program, but then let's use this impact fee to build new infrastructure, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense. I, I don't know, and perhaps I should know this, maybe it was in one of those, those water meetings where it was just beyond me. But sewer now, how far out does that go?
Well, we, uh, did a, um, a deal with the governor about, what, two years ago, James? Um, the governor had a, for lack of a better term, a slush fund, uh, that we found out about. And he gave us generously three hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of that account. And we expanded, uh, off of our trunk system out onto Liberty.
Okay.
At the bottom of the hill, actually, I think your brother brought the, bought the property right across from it. So that is where our sewer extends to currently on the west side of town. And then we have it sporadically throughout town here, going down Barrington a little ways. Uh, there's a lift station that goes down to, what's Michael's subdivision that's down here?
Barrington. South Barrington.
South Barrington Estates. Uh, so as far as south as it goes on Barrington is just right here, down here at the curve. So, um, you know, go north a little bit. We have some on the north side of, uh, off of Liberty with those subdivisions that are up there. Most of the time, what has happened in this city is we've utilized developers to bring the sewer to their developments. Which, whether it be right or wrong, when you're a city that doesn't make a whole lot of money, we have to count on those people to do that. So what we're trying to do kind of with this bond package is we're bringing the sewer out in hopes to expand more development potential. And, and what I've told James is, and what I see, and your crystal balls may be different, is our city is going to be expanding more to the west with a new highway coming out there. Um, I, I'll give you another example. June tenth or eleventh, I think, um, I'm meeting with, um, Five J, what is her, what's the full name? Five J?
Five J Farms.
Five J Farms, uh, Mr. Jim Bob Dugger and also our state senator. Uh, because there is some infrastructure monies coming from the federal government and from the state. And, um, I'm having a meeting with them on that date to discuss the possibilities of making application for federal funding for specific infrastructure funding for that area. So, you know, there's lots of wheels going on right now, trying to find money and, and spur development here in Northwest Arkansas and, and, and Tonnit Town is prime. So, uh, you know, we're going to explore every avenue we can to try to get as much free money. But I think with this bond issue, what we're trying to do is we're trying to spur our own development. We're putting the sewer where we stra- just strategically think it will bring more development potential to us and impact the city sooner with that money.
Yeah, makes sense. And then how far out are, do we have water? And then, and then I guess the next question on both those is, how far out do you want to take sewer? How far out do you want to take water?
Well, here's the game. Um, when I first became mayor of the city of Tonnit Town, um, the first thing that happened to me was, was a letter from the city of Springdale raising my water rate. I didn't know anything about our water at that time. Um, so I call up Doug Sprows, which was mayor of Springdale, and I asked him, I said, I just got a water rate increase from you guys. What's that about? And he said, well, we don't control water. You'll have to talk to Heath. He's the guy that controls water. So I called a gentleman named Heath, asked him why we just got a, a rate increase on our water. And he said, well, because we can, basically. Um, city of Tonnit Town had experienced four raises in our water prices and without an explanation at all as to why they raised our rates. Our rates are pretty high for our little town. So we started exploring avenues of trying to not go through a middleman, so to speak. Because currently what happened was the Springdale was buying water from Beaver Water. And then they were then turned around and selling it to us. So I went on a desperate search. I met and begged and groveled with, uh, Washington Water Authority to see if I could hook on to them, even though I knew that their prices were even higher than Springdale. I just wanted to go to somewhere that wasn't going to raise our rates, something that we could go with some consistency. Um, so anyway, we finally locked in and found, uh, Scott Borman with Two Ton, uh, which they agreed to possibly service the city of Tonnit Town. So to answer your question in a, in a long answer here, our water extends past the Illinois River Bridge over towards Salem Springs on four twelve, which is some seven and a half miles away from our city limits.
The sewer is roughly how far from you?
Our sewer kind of sprawls out everywhere in Tonnit Town.
But if we go west down four twelve?
We need to go west down four twelve.
And how far west does it go right now?
Currently, as far west as it goes is Brockin, Brockin Arrow, is that right, James?
Yeah, along four twelve, that's as far as it goes. And then, then the line that he was talking about that was put in a couple of years ago is, uh, extends even further west. But it comes up from, from the north, from the trunk line. And, uh, eventually we'll serve all that area around where the interchange will be.
So, or, I'm sorry, I, I'm, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What we would like to do, where Liberty is, we would like to bring that sewer line up to the top of the hill to allow expansion of all of that area up there to grow, maybe a hotel or something coming there is what they would like to see. Um, and go out even further to our city limits if we can get. If we can get across the highway, then also what we'd like to do is bring it up from Liberty. And you know where Renali's is? Cut across Renali's, bringing the sewer line back up.
You mean Chris or?
All of the.
The whole thing.
Yeah.
All the way down to the last Renali.
Yeah, just bring it up to the highway and bring it out because we met, uh, James and I had lunch, uh, the other day at, uh, the newest Mexican restaurant in Tonny Town. And had a gentleman that owns a, uh, three businesses here on the highway asking us about sewer. So I, I asked the gentleman, I said, if we can get this up on the highway, would you extend it to your property? He said, absolutely. So there's three new connections that we could add immediately if we could just get the sewer up there on the highway. And I think there's several other places on the highway that could see serious development potential if we could get them sewer. Now, here's the rub, when you ask me about the water and how far we want to take it. We initiated, um, trying to take a service area. At the time, I didn't realize that a service area had been claimed past our city limits. So what I wanted to do was claim the service area past our city limits, all the way to the Illinois River Bridge. And then come before you guys and ask for annexation of that area. Unfortunately, what we have found out is Washington Water Authority about 15 years ago, through some backdoor deal, got designated that area. So whenever we made application to Little Rock to take over that service area, the gentleman that runs and operates, uh, Washington Water Authority made a mad dash down to Little Rock to complain about city of Tonny Town trying to take their service area. So we withdrew our application because there was no use fighting it. They had a preliminary board meeting about it and discussed it and basically said that Tonny Town wasn't going to get it because it had already been given away. So that shut me down on doing any more annexation that way. There's no sense in annexing something that we can't service at this time. You guys may feel different about that. But want to take care of something that we're not going to make anything off of. So that's where we're kind of stuck in a quandary. So.
I've got Washington Water where I am too.
High in it.
It is.
Yeah. And, and we still continue our talks with them. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to do, to be as nice as I can with them. Recently this last year, they did do some trading on service area for us. So we've taken in some more things. We've given up a few things. But we've benefited the city immensely with what we have traded them out of. And hopefully, uh, if we can continue to talk to them and possibly convince them that it would be a good idea for them to allow us to service within their area along the 412 corridor. They might agree to that eventually, if enough people will call and write in and talk to the powers that be down there, I think.
James, are you trying to educate me? With this map?
Yeah, I was just trying to show you.
Trying to see what information I have on this computer. I don't have a whole lot here, but you can see on the map, all the blue lines are water lines. So you can see the extent of it out to about where our city limits is. The sewer, uh, ends currently, uh, right here. That's the one that we're talking about bringing up, uh, into this area. And then the water, or I'm sorry, the sewer along 412, uh, this is as far west as it goes currently.
And show me where 612 is coming in.
Right out here. It's going to come in somewhere in this neighborhood.
Okay, so it's right through that area.
Yes.
Good.
And if you want to see the, all the existing sewer lines, I can show that to you on, on my computer.
And where's Renali on this map? Right where you're.
Right here's the, let me make sure. Yeah, right here's the area that we were talking about bringing, uh, a sewer line up. Now, we're going to go up this, uh, this way to service, uh, the area around the interchange. But we also looked at bringing a line up right in here where Renali Produce is.
Those buildings to the south are the one the gentleman hit me up about, sir.
You mean the south side of 412? Yes, sir. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you both so much. Very educational.
Any questions about any of that, Don?
Sorry, we can't interrupted your conversation, Mr. Dowdner.
Like I say, out of, I'm for refinancing those other ones and doing the water and sewer improvements. This right here is, I do like the, what y'all are going here. Now this would go on to the developer when they brought a project forward, the impact fees, or is that going to go?
The impact fees would, uh, and, and I'll let Gene talk about it when it comes to it. But, um, basically what we have to do is, is complete a study, uh, per state law. And, uh, once the study comes back and, and, and lines everything out and tells us, hey, this is what you need to be charging and this is what you can charge for, then, then we can go forward with it. And it's not a, it's not an overnight deal where I'm going to rush the council through it. It's going to take several months before we could actually implement it. But yes, to answer your question, uh, every house, not just a developer, if an individual comes in and wants to build a house in Tonny Town, then there would be a, a fee associated with that. Yeah, yeah, per, per permit, if you will, that's pulled.
Well, how, where's everybody else at on the bond deal? I don't, like I say, I don't. I'd be willing to move forward if we could get a solid number on a fire station and, uh, if everybody was ingredients on it and, uh, the road money, if we need to take that money back out, I, we can, you know, we don't have to go to the full max that we can get. If we need to take that back out of the bond money, then.
Well, one thing that, that I did set up with Mr. Falk was, um, and I had him repeat several times to you guys. If we don't use the money, then it gets paid back to repay the bond. And, and my fear, especially, and Amber can attest to this, with the cost of building materials seeming like they're doubling every two weeks, my only fear in the, in the build out of this deal is what happens if I get right up to the end and I'm short? So what I've tried to do was have the architect give us a high and a low and try to place us kind of in the middle of the high and low of what they expect. And then ask for that amount. And then if we can get it done cheaper, and like I said, my intentions are is to form a committee to, to build this and then go out and try to get things done cheaper. So if it doesn't cost us the amount, um, then great. Uh, like I told you guys, I think the last meeting, uh, Cave Springs had their bond issue in this last two weeks ago or last week, whenever it was, they had their bid opening for their fire station. And it had nothing to do with the engineers, had nothing to do with the architects. It had nothing to do with the purchase price of the land. It was merely building the fire station. And it came in at 2.8 million was their low bid to build the fire station. Now, I don't know how big it was or how many bays, or if they had living quarters or any of that stuff. And I'll be more than happy to find that information out for you if you want me to.
Please do.
Don, I agree with you. The, the water sewer projects need to be done. I agree that that should go on the bond. I definitely agree. We need to evaluate just the fire building itself. Plus any other, um, things that need to be done for that. Make sure we cover all of our costs on it, so we're not cut short, like Mayor was saying, at, at the end of the project. And not being able to have enough funds to, um, to do everything, yeah, no soft cost. So I would like to definitely see those things in the, in the bond issue. And I think the impact fees would definitely be a good way to remove that part of the bond issue with the roads and come back with another avenue to replace that. So we wouldn't be financing those streets for 30 years because I, I agree. I mean, I, I wholeheartedly agree. We need to have it done. That's not, that's not the question. But I think this would be a better way to get it done. With those other, uh, funds coming in versus financing it for, for that many years.
So Mayor, I want to ask you, um, a, a question. When I look at this list, there's 3.6 million to refund the bond, 3.7 million for water improvements, three and a quarter for sewer improvements, and then whatever the fire department comes in at. Are there any one of those things where, I know you're creative. I, I've never seen anybody quite as creative as you, and that's a good, good thing. Do you think that any one of those that we could find a way to pay for with cash? Just one.
James, what we have in our account for me?
It's about 4.2, but when you look at all areas, there's, and I'm, and I'm, I understand I'm co-mingling funds. There's roughly, according to Pat, after we back out, the 107 for parks, 170 for police, the 450 for six months where the salaries and 52,000 for the fire department. There's roughly 6.2 million. The city has, I don't know, 3.6. I ran through some of those numbers. I don't mind sharing them.
Here's the only rub, uh, and you have to, you have to treat them separately to him. And here's one.
I, I understand that. Yeah.
I, I can't pay off, I can't pay off anything for water and sewer through my general account.
Right.
Or I can, I can do that.
But they can't pay for you.
But I can't take water and sewer money and pay off general stuff.
Right.
So my fear here is, yes, the answer to your question is yes. We can pay off stuff out of our accounts.
Is there one of these that you could see that maybe we could do that with and still feel comfortable with an emergency fund?
Yeah, I mean, I think if, you know, depending on what my talks with, um, the senator go like in, uh, June, then there's a possibility that if I can get some federal funding through whatever accounts that they're going to pull that out of, then obviously I can do less with sewer. And if the, the folks that we're dealing with, Mr. Dugger and, and Five J Farms can assist us in helping, bring that sewer on up, cost share, then yeah, I, I wouldn't have to have as much sewer money to, to plug into the deal. So, uh, I guess to answer your question, if, if you want me to decrease some of the debt by not borrowing as much on the bond, yeah. I mean, uh, I can report more to you after I have that meeting in June to tell you how much money that I'm getting or hope to get to do some of those projects. You know, I still contend that you got to look at the cost of doing business down the road. What it costs us today for, for material costs, what it costs us today for labor costs, and what it costs us, as you well know, for the price of money. So regardless of the fact of whether I can find more money to pay more stuff off, if this city can afford and we can figure out ways to put more lines in the ground, then we're going to have more development occur. I think, um, you know, as far as paying off $3.6 million on the current bond, yeah, I guess I can take, because it's a water and sewer bond that, that is up. Then I could take 3.6 million out of a $4 million account and leave us for, with $400,000 in that account that, which wouldn't be good. So, yeah, I mean, we can take some of these projects and try to pay for them cash out of pocket, if that's what you guys prefer to do. And we don't mind trying to do that. But I would be hesitant to say yes, that I'm going to pay cash for this project when I don't know if I can get the money from the senator yet.
Yeah, I totally understand that. And, and I'm, I mean, I don't, I don't know how you feel about it. I don't, I don't know how anybody else feels about it. But I'd be willing to, to wait a little longer to hear that.
And that's fine by me.
Okay.
I tell you what, if you guys don't mind, and tell me if I'm, I'm hearing this wrong, and Mr. Dowdner, please speak up. For right now, you guys are cool with the payoff of the 3.6, right?
Yes.
You're cool with the building of the fire station? And you're semi-cool with the water?
Oh, I think we're absolutely cool with the water and the sewer. Am I right?
And the sewer, okay. And, uh, I think that you're fine with me putting the 1.5 back into just the water and sewer and not doing the street yet. I look at you for that because you suggested it.
Oh, absolutely. If we can get funds elsewhere other than borrowing it for streets, that's, that's a slam dunk.
Okay. So why don't I recommend this? Let's forward this discussion on to the council meeting. Let me try to get ahold of Mr. Falk, not necessarily the attorney, because I don't think there's need for him just yet. Also, let me get back ahold of the architect to, to firm up his numbers. Also, let me find out from Cave Springs what they're truly building and what it kind of looks like to bring it up here for you guys. And all this just be for discussion. So hopefully all those can, things can be answered for you in the council meeting. From there, let me have my meeting with the senator in, in June to see what he's suggesting as far as money. And if I can know about what funds that they're talking about and what everybody else is wanting to do on that end of town to see what funds is available there, then come back and possibly readjust our water and sewer after that point. Would that make more sense to everybody and then have a final vote in?
All in.
July?
Absolutely.
Would that be fair?
If we could have all that stuff ready by July, that'd be fantastic. I mean, I, my big, my big thing is that I felt so rushed last week. And I, I very much appreciate your willingness to work with us last week. But I'm thankful that we didn't get together the next day and sign off on that bond, especially because we've had a week to think about it. Uh, and I very much appreciate your willingness to do that. If you're willing to do that, I would so appreciate that.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Fair enough.
Okay, you're putting the 1.5 back in though, so like the 3.75, well, that would go to four and a half. And the other one go up, you're taking both those up? I mean, I don't understand where you're putting it back into the bond and adding those bonds up, 1.5.
Yeah, what I'm saying is take the 1.5 that we took away.
Yeah.
And just put it back to water and sewer.
So where we were taking 1.5 away from public safety, the public safety building, we take that extra one and a half.
I know, but the water and sewer is broke down, just like everything. It has to be broke down individually. So you're putting 0.75 back into that one, 0.75 back into that.
Yeah, however, Mr. Falk tells me, I can figure it. Like he called me today and he said, I, I didn't understand it. But he said something about his calculations of rounding wasn't quite 1.5. It was like $50,000 off. So my intention would be to put approximately 1.5 back into water and sewer projects.
Right. And at, and at this point, I think it's fair to say that we don't know where these dollars would land because there's still a lot to find out between now and the first meeting in July.
Yeah, because one thing that we do have to do on these bonds is when we create the question, we have to also demonstrate the project and what we're spending on each project. Same way, and I'll kind of chime in just a little bit before Gene talks about the impact fees. One of the things that goes along with impact fees, and you could ask Mr. Ackman about, we can't just take in money and keep taking in money and keep taking in money without spending it. One of the requirements on the impact fees is if you're taking in, and I'll just use around number 10 bucks off of somebody's house for an impact fee, we have to spend that within so many years, or that impact fee has to be given back to those people. So it kind of puts the city on notice that you're going to collect this money and you're also going to do these projects. So.
I think that's awesome.
It is. Yeah, it kind of forces, you can't, you can't just make it a big piggy bank. So anyway, are we all good with what I was talking about?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay, that's what we'll do then.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, counsel. Next is our discussion on the impact fees. This is something that we've been looking at for a while. We've been talking about for a while. And I think the comment was made, I wish we had looked at this three years ago because we would have had pretty good, uh, flow to be able to help pay for some projects and, and things within the city. Impact fees are pretty much a common, uh, item in all of our cities in Northwest Arkansas at this point. Personally, I don't know of any cities that, that, uh, are not charging impact fees. When your builders come in and, and ask and you say, we have no, no impact fees and our eyes light up, you know, you know, you're probably missing the boat on something. Um, and this is one of those instances. As Mayor was, was saying a few moments ago, there is state law on this that requires us to do a study. So I would like to kind of start the, uh, thought process for everyone. And, uh, number one, we need to start the, um, process to have this evaluated. And, uh, we do have someone in mind that can do that for us. Once we, we get that, which could take months to do. And the number six months came up is a roundabout timeframe. So it's not going to be a next month type thing where we put something in place. But that would give us time how we want to handle those impact fees and the, the cost. that would give us time how we want to handle those impact fees and the the cost. Personally, I'd, I think it it could be beneficial if we had residential fees versus commercial fees, even industrial fees, if we had something else come in industrialize. If we have duplex, quads, or anything else, we could have fees that cover per dwelling inside of those, or we could have one fee that covers the entire complex. So if you've got a a quadplex, you could have one one fee that covers the entire building, or you could have it where you're actually actually charging for each family. So excuse me. Any ideas?
First of all, Council, let me tell you a little bit, too. We've contacted a company called Duncan and Associates that actually conducts the studies. To give you a ballpark idea, we initially contacted them and just said we wanted to look at a ballpark figure of what it would cost to do a water and sewer impact study. And they came back with an email that basically it's going to cost twenty five thousand dollars to conduct this study for just water and sewers. So I'm assuming that if you guys wanted them to do a study for everything, in other words, water, sewer, streets, fire, police, that number is probably not accurate. So just know that it's going to be a minimum of twenty five thousand. And I'm going to guess probably more like forty thousand to do this study. Again, it's a state law that that we have to have a study done to be able to even charge impact fees. So we just reached out to this company because we we found out that they were the ones that did the studies for other cities. So just to throw that in there.
Okay, so question. And and I think you alluded to it, Gene, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. So we can assess of an impact fee or a rate, a price for a residential of a certain square footage size or zone?
It can be by square footage, by home.
Okay. And then we can, we can, that can be a sliding scale. So it's not four thousand dollars per home or a thousand dollars per home, it's per square foot, or it's whatever we ultimately decide. And then that cost is paid by the developer, whoever, which is somehow built into the price of the and Amber, I'm looking at you, which is somehow built into the price of the project or the
I mean, I'm I'm guessing it would, it would be. I don't know.
Say it again, Don?
Figure they're going to pass it on.
Right, right.
The end user is going to pay for it. But wherever it comes from, it comes to support the city in some way, and it's a way to provide an income stream to the city.
We determine those rates?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's my, that's inherent in my question there. So do we determine that? And these, and the study helps us determine how much we can charge?
We can charge. Correct.
I like it. I've always liked the idea. I like the idea.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think the impact fees, parks, fire, police, the whole, the, as long as it's quote unquote a city need, right, then we can't.
Right. Yeah, that's part of the study is for them to do, to one, determine is there a need to charge this? And then they need to assess what is the impact on the city for somebody to come in and build one house? Or to build three hundred houses, you know, down the road? What is it actually costing the city to do business is what the impact fees are all about. And we, and we have to follow certain guidelines to the state to be able to charge these things because developers can come back and sue you to get those impact fees back if you're not dotting every i and crossing every t.
So bas- basically, I would like to have some ideas coming back to the administration to help them determine the best avenues on this. With small businesses coming in into Tawny Town, we could charge per rooftop, per square footage, per, you know, there's different, different ways to do it. But I would like to see a lot of different ideas coming in on this.
We could charge restaurants versus retail versus whatever, right?
What I would like to ask for is for you guys to push this forward to city council to vote, to allow us to start the process, in other words, to have this company hired to do their study. I will make that motion.
I will second that.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Don?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Last, our comments from council members, and I will start down with Larry. You're quiet.
And I think I'll remain quiet. I I'll think more on what I I have to say, so.
Thank you. Amber?
Impact fees, why did it take us so long to charge impact fees? Well, we missed out on a lot of money.
Good question. You know, we're taking care of it now, so.
Yes.
Any other comments? Amber?
Nope, that's it.
Art?
What you said about about that, Amber said too, but charging by square footage.
Now turn it off. Okay. Charging by square footage, then you're going to have to get somebody to to go along and figure out every price for every house. You know, this guy's going to pay three thousand dollars, this guy's going to pay fifteen hundred. Get it set to me. Get a a certain amount that you charge every one of them for every house. And then you, on your commercial and that, a different deal on that. But I think the houses, I think everybody ought to, I think it'd be more fair if you don't charge everybody the same price, but whichever way you all do it is fine with me.
Well, I think you need to lean on this company to tell us what their recommendation is.
Right.
And then you guys can discuss, and hopefully they give you guys some options as to what you can do or can't do. I mean, I don't know the the legalities of all of it just yet, and Justin tried to school me as best he could over a phone conversation. So I'd like to bring him in at the council meeting to also visit with you guys a little more about it, too, as well.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Art.
Oh, I think I'm good. No comment. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Tim?
Yeah, I did want to make a few comments. Thanks. Last, two meetings ago, after the city council meeting, I appreciate that you all that we were all unified on that repealing of the mask stuff. After that meeting, a gentleman who I I don't know approached me out here, and I thought he was going to shake my hand. And as I went to shake his hand, he sort of leaned away and said, I don't want to touch you. And he said, I think your words were irresponsible. And it it sort of nailed me, right? I don't know who it was. As he, he made his comment and he walked out the door. Last week, after our emergency meeting, I had a conversation with a person who said that I'm condescending. And that's not my intention ever. And I hope you all know that I very much respect you and I very much enjoy working with you. And if I come across that way, I am so sorry. It is not my intention, and I am terribly sorry. In the same conversation, it was pointed out that I don't have a business license, which is true. I don't have a business license. James and I had talked about it the day prior. And I started looking into that. I found in our statutes that my city, or I'm sorry, my, my business doesn't qualify for the need of a business license, but I mention that because I've got eight kids and I've got a wife. And the reason why I want them here is because I want them to see what we do for this place. I want them to know what Rhonda does and what James does and what y'all do here, what the mayor does. I want them to know about the chiefs. I want them to be involved, and I want them to see that their father is a man of integrity and a man of purity. And so I want to encourage you. If I am condescending, or if I am wrong in any area, if you see that I'm doing something that doesn't look right or isn't right, I hope you will please do what that kind person did for me last week and even the week prior to point out that there's something about me that's off. And here's what I promise you I will do. I will seek it out and I will fix it that fast. So if I'm off, please let me know. And I don't want you to feel weird about it, but I want to be a man of integrity as I endeavor. You all want me to be as well. So if you'll do me that favor, then it will allow me, as I'm raising them, to be an example to them as well. But again, I want to say I am terribly sorry. I'm sorry I didn't know the rules about a business license before last Tuesday. I should have known that. And I'm sorry if I have in any way in my behavior, my words been irresponsible. I know I often get a little too jokey about things, and I'm sorry about that. And I'm sorry if I've done anything to offend you, and I hope you'll also come to me privately so that I can make things right with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And I do not have any comments tonight, other than I would say to each of the council members, I have the utmost respect for each of you. You all do a fabulous job. You're great to work with. Everybody has their different abilities. And as a team, I think we do doggone well. So thank you, Council. Your your thumbs up in my book for each and every one of you. Next, we'll go on to our mayor.
All right, Council. First things first, let's see. I need to make an announcement to the city of Tawny Town again, because we have been having several calls and several Facebook things sent to me. Wanted to know why people haven't been notified about using Tawny Town as their address. So again, if you're watching tonight, you can use Tawny Town as your Facebook address. We are currently working with our state representative, Mr. Robin Lundstrom. Been on phone conversations with our congressmen's Facebook address. Excuse me, not my Facebook address, city address. I'm sorry. No wonder nobody's using it. City address. Tawny Town, USA. It's still seventy seven, six, two. But you can start using it immediately. If you haven't heard about it, I apologize. I think we've tried to put it out everywhere that we can possibly think of to put out, to start using it. We are working, like I said, with a representative to hopefully, knock on wood, knock on this wood, that we will get a zip code change one day, which I think will totally fix our our dilemma. But it's only taken six and a half years to allow them to allow us to use Tawny Town. So hopefully, in the next six and a half years, we can get a zip code. Events that's gone on in Tawny Town, I want to reach out to our our police department because the fishing tournament was a blast. The little kids that caught the fish out there were so excited when they got to see their line. I think more parents were excited than the kids were, but it was just a really cool event, and I look forward to many more years to come with that event, and I hope the Henshaw family will continue to let us use their lakes, because it was a super, super deal. Getting back to our farmer's market, I know that Danielle was on this euphoric high for about two weeks, and it's kind of diminished just a little bit because of rain showers and everything else. Keep the faith. Keep the faith, because what you girls did out there, Amber, you guys, you guys are awesome. And you guys, I keep getting calls about people saying, you know, where was this, where was that, are they not coming back? I mean, my own mother has sent me some text messages about somebody that keeps decorating and making deals for the flowers, for the graves and everything, that she's not showing up to the farmer's market. So anyway, you have customers that want to see you guys. So don't give up on it. Keep, keep fighting. Now, last but not least, you know, I need to say something to our council, because, you know, the the reason people put their names and hats to serve is absolutely not because of all the money that you make. The reason you put your hat in to serve is not because you're going to get some extra bonus for coming to a special meeting that your stupid mayor calls on occasion. The reason that you made the commitment to serve is because of your desire to make a better place to live. And I've made this comment several times before, that if you guys want to be a council that agrees with each other one hundred percent all the time, then you're doing a disservice to the city of Tawny Town. Because we're not here to to make each other feel good. We're not here to make sure that we vote the way our buddy wants us to vote on this council. We're here because we're independent, intelligent, thinking people. And that most of us sit on this body up here, not because we have an agenda to fulfill, it's more that we have a a vision for what we see Tawny Town to look like, not today, not tomorrow, but ten, twenty, fifty years from now, because the actions that this body takes is actions that will affect generations to come, or I hope so. So you know, I've been told that I use bullying tactics. And maybe, and maybe I do. Maybe I come across that I do, but I I need to also tell you guys that my passion for this city has not diminished, not one iota. And I may come across a little harsh to you when I tell you, look, I handed you that paperwork two weeks ago, you did not read it. I called you out in a meeting for it and told you that. My apologies for bringing that up front, but sometimes I get a little discouraged that my staff and myself put in hours and hours and hours of effort to bring you guys as much information as we possibly can give you, to only feel like that we're shunned by you because you didn't read it. We don't burn paper to just throw it away. We want to give you everything we could possibly give you so that you guys can make the most informed decisions that you guys can make. So my apologies for coming across a little bit rough. And also, you know, I understand that some people's opinion of me have diminished. And I apologize for that. I apologize to this council for anything that I have done to make you feel less of me. And Mr. Dowd? I apologize to you. And I, and I faithfully promise to work to regain that trust that you had in me. And I need you guys to know that I give every effort to make this a better town. Because I love it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. A motion to adjourn? All in favor? All right. Thank you, Council.